Evening, everyone. This is our regular meeting of the Southfield City Council being held as a WebEx for December 14th at 6:00 PM. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Banks, present. Brightwell?
Here.
Hoskins?
Present.
Morris?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Cruz?
Present.
Madam President, you do have a call. We'll excuse Councilman Hoskins, and we do have City Administration, City Attorney, the Mayor, and a host of other individuals on the line.
Thank you. Council, I will continue the tradition that our former Chair had of asking or rotating around for the Pledge of Allegiance for different council members to say that for us. So tonight, I'm going to ask Ari Mandelbaum if he would please say the Pledge of Allegiance for us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, we have presentations. We're going to go to appointments. We have two appointments before us tonight, and I think, Mr. Mayor, these are your appointments.
That's correct. Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
This evening, I'm asking for approval of two appointments to the Downtown Development Authority, also known as the DDA. The first appointment is to replace Joe Hershey, who was the president of Providence Hospital, Southfield, and Novi. Mr. Hershey has been promoted to Ascension, Michigan, and is no longer the administrator for Providence Hospital in Southfield. His replacement is Brant Russell, and I'm asking that he be appointed to fill Joe Hershey's seat. Secondly, and I'll interrupt myself just to say that the DDA Board reflects key entities within the Downtown Development Authority. So OCC, Open Community College, is also someone or an entity that has had representation on the DDA Board for many years, and currently, there is no OCC representative. So we reached out to the college, and they are recommending someone that is known to you, Elizabeth Ray. Elizabeth, when she left the city of Southfield, went to work for OCC as their legal counsel. And the administration of OCC has asked Ms. Ray if she would serve on the Board. I'm pleased to appoint her. So again, Council, I'm looking for approval of the appointment of Brant Russell and Elizabeth Ray for vacant seats on the Downtown Development Authority. Thank you.
Madam Chair, this is Lloyd Cruz.
Yes, yes.
I'd like to move that we approve the appointments, recommendations from the Mayor for Brant Russell and Elizabeth Ray to join the Downtown Development Authority.
Support. This is Councilwoman Brightwell.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilman Brightwell, to accept the appointments to the Downtown Development Area, I'm sorry, Authority of Brant Russell and Elizabeth Ray. Council, I will go through and ask if you have any questions or comments before we take the roll. Does anyone have any questions or comments before we take the roll? Okay, let's start with you, Councilwoman Banks.
Yes.
Councilman Brightwell?
Yes.
Councilman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilman Mandelbaum?
Are you asking for questions or for a vote?
We're doing the vote.
Oh, that, yes.
And Councilwoman Morris?
Madam President, did I miss something for the clerk not to do the roll call vote?
Yeah. Yes, that was me asking. I was supposed to have you asking for the vote, and I was asking if anybody had any questions, but you may now please do your call. It was a little bit out of line there, I'm sorry.
It's all right. Brightwell?
Yes, I support.
Now, it's a yes or no vote.
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
The appointment to the Downtown Development Authority of Brant Russell and Elizabeth Ray has been adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Now, does anybody have any comments or questions or anything that they'd like to say regarding these appointments? All right, here's none. We can move on to the next thing, is our minutes?
Madam President, just we did, I did send out an email earlier. It have an amendment to the regular minutes of November the 16th. So I would ask Council, when accepting those, just to accept those as amended. Everyone should have received my email earlier this afternoon.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I will answer protocol on this, but I want to, I have a question about the September 29th meeting minutes. We can go ahead and approve, but I want to pull those for a question.
Right now, then, we'll be looking for approval for minutes from November 16th as amended and for regular meeting minutes for November 30th.
Councilwoman Banks, I move that we approve the regular meeting of November 16th, 2020 as amended, and also the regular meeting of November 30th, 2020.
Support. Councilman Cruz.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilman Cruz, for the acceptance of our regular minutes of November 16th and our regular minutes of November 30th. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Minutes approved as amended for November 16th and minutes of November 30th.
Now for the minutes, our regular minutes of September 29th. Mr. Brightwell?
Yes, I have a question on consent agenda item A, which deals with the authorization for the firearms. And this perhaps will be a question and/or clarification by the Fiscal Department. It indicate that the, I thought the funds, the forfeiture funds, the federal forfeiture funds would be paying for this in total, but I see that they're taking money out of the fund balance. Is that, am I reading that correctly? That's item number, consent agenda item A is item number 2020 dot 234. So maybe we don't have an answer for that?
Austin, are you on the line? If not, Fred, would you be able to answer that?
Not at this time, but I'm actually pulling up the original write, writing. If we could perhaps, under, perhaps place this under my portion of the agenda, and Austin and I can do some quick communicating during the meeting.
Okay, that would be fine, yes.
All right, thank you, Madam Chairwoman. President.
Madam President, this is Councilman Mandelbaum?
Yes, Councilman Mandelbaum.
I just had a, I wanted to clarify what Councilman Brightwell is asking. Is he asking, he thought that it came from the federal forfeiture fund, not the fund balance? Is that the question?
Yeah, the question is, is the fund balance actually paying for this? It reads as though the forfeiture fund, I thought, my recall was the forfeiture fund would be paying for this renovation, but now, when I read this, it indicates that the fund balance is coming out of fund balance. And I don't, I want, I just want a clarification.
Okay.
Who is paying for this?
I just wanted to understand the question, that's all. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. And City Administrator Zorn will further or answer that for you at a later time under administration.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. Next, we have our consent agenda. We have consent agenda items A through K.
Madam President?
Yes.
This is Lloyd Cruz. I would like to move that we approve the consent agenda for items A through K.
Support. Councilman Mandelbaum?
It's been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilman Mandelbaum, for the acceptance of consent agenda items A through K. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Banks, I have a question. I was waiting for you to say if anyone had any questions, I'm sorry.
For the proper procedure, should I finish the vote, or do we take the questions now?
Well, I'd like one of the items, I've got a question on one of the items before we vote on it.
Okay.
That's fine.
Okay, what item, please, so we can pull it?
Item J.
Okay. So, Mr. Cruz, would you amend your motion?
Yes, I'm fine. We can, we can take the question.
Thank you.
Okay.
Are we going to vote, or you want me to ask a question?
I'm asking for the proper protocol at this time.
I think we pull that item and vote on everything else.
Sorry, I, this is...
Okay, so we will pull items, item J. So the vote will be for items A through...
We'll do items A.
...I and K.
H, I, and K.
And I support.
Thank you. Now, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
And that's approval of agenda items A through I and K.
Now, Councilwoman Banks, you have item J?
Yes, thank you. It was my understanding that at our last meeting, Council approved, under the terms, that this was for a one-year agreement, and that if it was going to be renewed again, it had to come back for Council for review, and that is not how it is written under the terms. Mr. Zorn, I thought we were going to have a, like, an amended presentation?
Yes. Just bear with me a second, I'm pulling up my work product earlier. The contract, I'm sorry, I got it from the right page here. The initial term of this agreement shall be February 1, 20, and I'm on Page 1, Section 3, Agreement 2, Item Number 3. Initial term of this agreement shall be February 1, 2021 through January 31, 22. When we, what we discussed earlier, a week ago, was this agreement was to be for one year and could not automatically be renewed. The action we're requesting is subject to the final review by the City Attorney's Office. As this reads right now, upon the expiration of the initial term of this agreement, the agreement may renew for a period of an additional year unless the agreement is earlier terminated in a manner provided below. Thereafter, this agreement may be renewed for an additional one-year term upon written agreement by the parties executed prior to the expiration of the agreement then in existence. This agreement shall become effective when signed by both parties. And what Ms. Banks and I discussed, and what was discussed, is that this would come back to Council for Council's approval in the event we seek a renewal on this contract. And I would recommend that the City Attorney, that we simply have this expire on January 31st, and it needs to come back to Council for approval if, if the administration elects to, or seeks to continue this contractual arrangement.
So are you saying that the, the contract will be amended to say that? It'll just end January 31st?
Of 2022, and if we want to bring it back, we will bring it back.
Okay.
So do we, do we have to pull this item then, so we can correct the language? Because I thought we were going to have the language in front of us, or just...
Well, we can approve it with, you know, with the approval of the amended, as amended.
And the action requested, and consistent with most of the agreements that I've seen in my 12 years here, is subject to the final review by the City Attorney's Office. Mid-afternoon, Ms. Banks and I did discuss this. I just wasn't able to get to it, and I apologize.
This is Councilwoman Morris, if I may through the Chair. I would feel more comfortable with voting on it after the language has been modified.
Okay, we can do that. We can pull this item then for a future council meeting, because this is the last one for this year, so we'll have to do it in January of next year. All right, well, then, our, so item J will be pulled until January's regular meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Would that be fine with you as well, Ms. Banks?
No, that's fine, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll continue with our meeting. The next topic is public hearing.
Yes, good evening. Tonight, we are considering PZR ODD 20-0001, Res zoning request of Contour Development on behalf of the owner, City of Southfield, to amend the existing ODD agreement for the Northland Subarea Redevelopment Plan Overlay Development District with underlying mixed-use development on approximately 87 acres, 78 acres. Next slide. Next slide. And everybody's familiar with the former Northland Center, which is bounded by Greenfield, Dale Hudson, Northwestern Highway, and Northland Drive. Next slide. This is existing conditions of the building and out parcels with associated parking. Next slide. And this is the proposed phasing plan. So Council will be considering the master development plan for the entire site, and we'll talk a little bit about the phasing. But Contour has provided a video, which kind of pulls together all the things that we've been talking about for the last couple of months. And Bruce Keppke is online. I'm going to ask him if he wants to provide some over narrative on the video, and I'm going to ask Wendell and IT if he could queue up the video now for a short presentation, and we'll come back to the slideshow finish up before we get to the public hearing. Thank you.
Yes, I'll be very happy to do that, Terry.
Just wait for IT to pull up.
We've literally built a computer model of the whole site with Phase 1 completely drawn in, and here we can go, go ahead. As you know, that Northland has quite a history to it, and part of our plans have always been to respect the history of Southfield, make this a one-of-a-kind place that residents of Southfield will be pleased and happy with, and more or less bring back the excitement and the innovation that Northland had at one time. And those full parking lots look pretty good, too. This is an aerial view. The Northland City Center is the name of the project, which includes the apartment buildings, multi-use buildings, and then renovation of this shopping center into an outdoor environment, and the reuse of the lower-level tunnels as a parking facility. It's an aerial view, showing in Phase 1, we have these apartments. We will also start working on Hudson City Market. And here are some views of that. If you, many people recall that one of the parking lots there was recessed, that Hudson City Market will be open to the lower level. Once again, where we'll have a park environment in Phase 2, but this shows the terrace above and then the development of this, this area that was once a sunken parking lot, but it'll, it'll be an amenity place with tot lot, dog park, and amphitheater for events, and just some very nice aesthetics. And in Phase 2, we will integrate some townhome development around this as well. So it will be something completely new at that time when this part of the phase is done. Do you remember, at one time, there was a bus stop on the terrace overlooking that sunken parking lot? We are going to reinstitute that, but as a Uber and Lyft drop-off and pickup station, renovate the entrances of the Hudson Building, has entrances into the Hudson City Market that will have multi-use, food, home furnishings, entertainment. And the overall idea of the whole thing is to return these spaces that are today vandalized and covered with structure from the 1970s into an open environment like Northland once had. And again, we'll have these outdoor places where we can hold events. The retail spaces on the first floor will be taken over in some cases by loft apartments, live-work, artist studios, and things like that, as part of that shopping center development. And here's a view along Greenfield Road that shows one of the major boulevard entrances into the project. There are multiple multi-use outdoor spaces as a part of the program between the buildings. Landscaping, the whole idea is that this whole site becomes walkable, that one could walk from one side of the development to the other on defined pathways that allow people to experience the whole, the whole project as they wish. So somebody who lives in an apartment could take an elevator down, use the walking paths, and go to the Hudson City Market. They could go to that park area when Phase 2 is completed. This view shows some of the townhouses that we would propose ordering that park. Again, this is some of the site development along Greenfield Road. The project will make a real new impression along Greenfield, and that will be essentially a calling card or an invitation for people to come and experience this new, new project.
Thanks. Wendell, if you could go back to the slide presentation and go to the last slide of, on this slide deck, which says, "Questions and Comments." And Madam Chair, it may be appropriate to open the public hearing at this point, and then after the public hearing, Bruce and myself will be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. This is a public hearing for PZR 0DD 20-0001, the rezoning request for Contour Development for the ODD agreement with Northland Redevelopment Plan Overlay Development District. This being a public hearing, I now declare the public hearing open. If there's anyone that would like to speak to this matter, Madam Clerk, would you please let us know? If they could raise their hand or ask their questions at this time.
Madam President, I will unmute everyone in our attendee list to see if anyone has anything to say during this public hearing. So I am doing that as we speak, so everyone under the attendee has been unmuted if they want to participate.
We have no public hearing comments, so I now declare the public hearing closed, and I will go to Council for comments or questions. And I will start with you, Councilwoman Morris.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have no comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
No, I have no comments, and you know, that, that video was actually, was a very nice presentation of what you're planning, so kudos to you for that.
Thank you very much. If you have the time, personally, you might want to go to YouTube, and if you just search Contour Companies on YouTube, you can see the full version with the music and everything.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
No questions for me on this. Thank you, though.
Thank you. Councilman Cruz?
No comments, Madam President.
Okay, Councilman Brightwell?
No comments or questions.
Banks? Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
No comments. It was an exciting presentation, and I just can't wait for it to begin. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr., Madam President, the Mayor would like to comment.
Okay, I'm sorry. Mr. Mayor?
Just to add that, this is so impressive and it's so gratifying that our community gave us feedback on what they wanted to see at Northland, and Contour Company is exceeding that. I'm very, very excited about this, and I know that, as the Council is, and really can't wait for the project to get finalized on as far as the purchase agreement and, and earth to move, and demolition of pennies, and a couple of the other parts of the mall come down. So congratulations on a great video.
Thank you very much.
Council, would you, now's the time for us to vote on this for approval?
Through the Chair, this is Planner Crood. I just want to clarify that you'll be making an approval on the Overlay Development District rezoning and the Master Development Plan tonight. There are still some outstanding site plan issues on Phase 1, which we'll bring back to you in January. So you'll be approving the ODD. We're recommending approving the ODD and the Master Development Plan, and then, once that carries, then you'll have to introduce ordinance number 1730. Thank you.
Thank you. Council? Thank you. Counsel?
Madam President, Councilman Cruz would like to move that we approve the rezoning request for Contour Development on behalf of the city of Southfield to amend the existing ODD agreement for the Northfield, Northland, our subarea development plan overlay.
Support, Councilwoman Morris?
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilwoman Morris, for the approval of PZR ODD 20-001. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Morris?
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Now may we have the introduction of ordinance number, the vote to introduce ordinance number 1730.
Councilman Cruz, again, I move to introduce ordinance number 1730.
Support, Councilwoman Morris?
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilwoman Morris, for the introduction of ordinance number 1730. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
The introduction of ordinance number 1730 has been adopted.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Crowe, we have the site plan.
Yes, thank you. Madam Chair, this is PSP 20-0012, the Site Plan Review Request of Yukon Building and Land Development on behalf of the owner, Ewi Hospitality for the site, and facade improvements, and the new entrance canopy on the north side of the five-story hotel property located at 26555 Holograph Road. I believe Mr. Dowling is on the line. But I had indicated during the study session that there was some issues with the lot consolidation. I know that they are working diligently to correct those issues, but we didn't have resolution in time for this meeting tonight. My recommendation is going to be to postpone this to a date certain of January 19. However, I do want to give Mr. Dowling the opportunity to address what they've been working on with, with the council. Thank you. Through the chair, David, do you want to speak?
Dowling, are you on the line?
I see him on... He was on the line.
I see him. It looks like he needs to unmute himself. He's unmuted on our end.
David, you need to unmute?
Okay, well, while we're waiting with the little technical difficulties now, so we can go ahead, counsel, if you would make the motion. We can go ahead and do that piece. And if he's available later, we can always, you know, come back.
Again, the motion would be to postpone to a date certain of January 19.
Okay, Councilwoman Banks, I move that we postpone PSP 20-0012, Site Plan Review Request of Yukon Building and Land Development to the January, was it 18?
19.
I'm sorry, 19, thank you. Regular council meeting.
Support?
Okay, it's been moved by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilman Mandelbaum, for the postponement to a date certain of January 19, 2021 of PSP 20-0012. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell? Brightwell? Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Site plan adoption moved into January 19.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Next, we have communication. And before we go into communication, I just want to give an update. Last week, when we had communications, we had a resident that was concerned about a home on Templar and Addison, where the roof was raised, and she had a question as if, as to see if it was a mosque or going to be a mosque. That question was taken to administration as well as planning and the building departments. And they researched this topic and contacted the resident and let her know that permits had been pulled for the remodeling of a home on Addison. And that what was going on was the home was removing the roof and replacing it. So they were doing like a raised ceiling. And all the permits and everything were within the city guidelines, and Mark Pilot was aware of everything that was there. So just to give you an update that it is within the city's guidelines. We did get proper permits pulled, requested, and know it will not be a mosque. The other thing that we found out is that this is a neighbor of Councilman Ari Mandelbaum, and he went a step further and went and talked to the residents. Councilman Mandelbaum, would you mind updating the council on the conversation that you had with the resident?
Well, I, I didn't speak with the resident who spoke to the council at the last meeting. I did speak with the homeowner about the roof and some of the concerns. And what I was told by him was that he is building a, this home for his in-laws who are elderly, and it's an open floor plan. So the roof was being raised in order to facilitate opening up some of the interior walls to have more of an open floor plan. But it's going to be a home for his in-laws to live in one, once it's completed. So I hope that helps to clarify.
Thank you for that. We'd just like to update you. No, go ahead, Councilman.
You know, I, I just hope that that, that helps, you know, that update helps alleviate some of the concerns in the neighborhood. And, you know, because the roof was being raised so high in a, in a, well, not so high, but because it was being raised from the vantage point of my home, I can see where the roof was being raised. So when, when the resident came to speak to us, I reached out to the homeowner just to let them know some of the concerns. And so hopefully, that, that resident who had the concerns, hopefully, this eases some of those, those issues.
Thank you. Now we can open up for communications. Madam Clerk, would you please open the lines?
Yes, someone that just raised their hand. They're, you're unmuted.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Okay, good evening, Honorable City Council, Mayor, City Administrator, and Resident. My name is Rhonda Terry, and I'm the outreach case worker at the Southfield Human Services Department. This year has been, has been very challenging for a lot of agencies and churches due to COVID-19 pandemic. But I just wanted to thank my coworkers, the City of Southwood Department, Administration, elected officials, residents, local agencies, and churches for donating their time and talent and monetary donations to the Human Services Department. And just a special thank you to the Korean Presbyterian Church of Metro Detroit, Midwest Independent Retailers Foundation, St. Mary the Protectress, Ukranian Orthodox Cathedral, Detroit Mark Thoma Church, and the Southfield Lethal Crop Hunger Walk. Because although we're going through a COVID-19 pandemic, they have still continued to support human services. And that's my report, and everybody have a happy holiday.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And Madam Chair, I'll mute all the other callers to see if they wanted to speak. At this present time, everyone that's an attendee has been unmuted.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak tonight? Okay, we're hearing none. I guess we should move to the council portion. So, counsel, I'll start with you, Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. Since this is the last meeting of the year, I would just like to wish everyone a very happy and safe holiday season and also a Happy New Year. There's some exciting things on the horizon for 2021 with the vaccine just around the corner. And I, I'm confident that 2021 will be a better year than 2021 for many people. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
I pretty much echo Ms. Banks's comments. And 2020 has been a very awful year. And it's, but I, I have a lot of confidence in the world, in America, that things will definitely get better. And a lot of things are on the horizon. And I want to wish, wish my council members and the administration a very wonderful and happy holidays. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Cruz?
Yes, of course, I'm gonna just echo what already has been said. So I won't prolong everything. But while 2020 has been a rough year for, for all of us, I got a wife this year, so I'm, I mean, I had a good year.
Yep, congratulations.
And, you know, and I, and I know that there, you know, while there were bad things going on for people, still some good came out of this year. And I hope a lot of that had to do with people being in contact with their families, their friends more consistently. And, you know, because that's very important. And I think sometimes we take it for granted. But when you can't see them and be with them, you can really tell how, you know, what the difference is. So, and I miss you all, counsel, Ms. Mayor, Administration, everybody. It's, you know, it's been a rough year for us in terms of not being able to see each other in these meetings or be with each other. You know, but nonetheless, we've, we've made do, and we've got through the year. And like I said, like Ms. Banks said, vaccinations are coming around soon, and hopefully, we'll be back around with each other soon. So I just wish everyone a happy holidays, and all take care.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
Thank you. And I'll just echo what everyone said. I do wish everyone a very happy holiday, a very Happy New Year. Of course, this is not how we all plan on celebrating the end of the year. But as everyone has said, there's light at the end of the tunnel. Vaccines are going out, and I hope that means that 2021 is certainly a lot better than 2020. So I hope you all stay safe and enjoy any time you get to spend with your, your families over the holidays. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
Thank you. Yes, I'll just echo what my colleagues have said. You know, wish everyone a happy holidays, looking forward to 2021. And also, you know, thank you to, to the residents who try to, who make sure that the council is always working for, for you and for the city. And thank you to the city staff, especially the ones we don't always see that do a lot of behind-the-work scenes. Thank you for, for this difficult year, making it a little bit easier for everyone, especially our first responders. And as well, looking forward to a productive year next year with our, our council and the mayor, administration. And I just, a very short, quick story, though, because tonight, all the Jews are celebrating Hanukkah, and, which is really a holiday celebrating miracles. And so there is a miracle that has happened, or that I celebrate personally, that happened to my family on the first night of Hanukkah back in 1938. My maternal great-grandfather, who I actually got to meet, was released from a concentration camp in Nazi Germany. And he actually rejoined his family as they were lighting the first candle on the menorah. The whole crazy story of how he was released at that point is probably a book in of itself. But if that miracle didn't happen, that he was, that he was released from the concentration camp, and he and his entire immediate family would not have been able to leave Germany, and they all would have been murdered. But because he was released and he escaped, I am here today and able to serve the residents of the city of Southfield. So every year, Hanukkah is a special to me because of that great miracle. But other than that, I'm sure everyone has their own miracles that they celebrate throughout the year and especially around the holiday time. But again, thank you to everyone for everything that you have done for the city in making it a great place to work, live, play, worship, do business, everything. And looking forward to a good 2021. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for sharing that moving story. Councilwoman Morris?
Yes, thank you. And thank you for sharing that very wonderful reflection, Councilman Mandelbaum. And Councilman Cruz, you brought a smile on my face, just reminding us that although 2020 has, you know, had a lot of trouble, we have also seen some joy. So thank you for that. I just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, a Happy Hanukkah, a Happy Kwanzaa. Enjoy this holiday season with your family and be safe and stay well.
Thank you. And I'll just continue with what my colleagues have already said tonight. Tonight is the last council meeting for 2020, and I just wanted to take some time to reflect a little bit, too. I'd like to thank all of the healthcare workers, the grocery store workers, the mail workers, and all other essential workers that kept and continue to keep this city running. Many of our city services, including this remotely-held council meeting, have had to change how they've served the residents. And I'd like to thank the city employees who have implemented plans to continue these services with social distancing and other safety measures, and the residents who have shown patience during these transitions. I'd also like to thank all those at home and the people of Michigan who have had to sacrifice by staying at home, changing how they work, changing how they've celebrated holidays with family, and changed their daily lives to help stop the spread of this virus. As we move past this year and into 2021, I'd like to wish all a safe and merry holiday season and a happy and prosperous new year as we face these challenges and enter into 2021 together. So thank you.
Amen, Madam President.
Thank you. Now I'd like to ask Mayor Ken Cyber?
Good evening again. I would concur with counsel persons Morris and Cruz. We've been We've been dealt something that is beyond our control and there's always a silver lining. So we're, we've been under a great, a great challenge and a lot of pressure. It's been hard in many, many ways, but we've come through it, most of us, and will continue to serve our constituents. I do want to mention, and again, this is the silver lining thing, we did something very different this year to celebrate the holiday. And we will be doing something different again on Wednesday night with Hanukkah. But on Friday night, Parks and Rec had a holly jolly Christmas event. 650 children were served on Friday night. It was a very incredible event. All of the city staff from Parks and Rec, Community Relations, Emergency Management, the police, fire departments, really pulled off a wonderful, wonderful event for our Southfield kids and families on Friday night. And Wednesday, we'll be doing a different Hanukkah event. But nonetheless, we kept the tradition going, although we're forced to alter how we normally do things. Five o'clock, there'll be a Hanukkah parade and lighting of the menorah on the city center property. More details of this are on the city website. I too would like to wish our fellow elected officials, our city staff and administration, and all in the community a very, very fast holiday, continuing to stay safe as we await the arrival of the vaccine. Happy holidays to you all.
Thank you. Next, we have administration. Mr. Zorn?
Madam President, I'm here. I apologize, a little technical difficulty. The first item I have this evening is the appointment of the Deputy Fire Chief. Mr. Meadows should be with us as well as Chief Menefee, as well as our candidate. James and Chief Menefee, are you both here?
This Chief Menefee, yes, sir.
This evening, I am requesting that the council hereby approve the appointment of Mr. Anthony Macias as a Deputy Fire Chief at a starting salary of $94,171 in the Management Group Grade Q with eligibility for a wage step increase following successful completion of the six-month introduction period. This appointment would include the regular Tier Three Management Group benefit package as set by council. James or Chief Menefee, do you want to make some introductions here?
This Chief Menefee, you can say it. Okay, thank you. Good evening, Madam President, Council, Mr. Mayor. We've been actively recruiting for a Deputy Fire Chief for the last seven months. We had 12 applicants apply for the position after assessment center and oral interviews. Anthony Macias was the top candidate. He has over 30 years of fire service experience. He started his career in the City of Pontiac for 22 years, working his way up to the ranks of Deputy Chief. He spent the last eight years in Auburn Hills as an Assistant Fire Chief. He has background in management. He's a current paramedic, understands medical billing. He has two associate's degrees, one in EMT, one in fire science. He has a bachelor's degree in public safety administration, as well as being a graduate of Staff in Command from Eastern Michigan University. I believe he will be a great asset to the fire department, a great asset and ambassador for the city of Southfield and in our mission. So I'd like to introduce you to Anthony Macias. Hopefully the candidate, candidate for our Deputy Chief. Mr., would you like to say a few words?
I'm sorry, Chief, were you speaking to me?
Yeah. Were you talking to the candidate, Chief?
Sounds like we're having a little difficulty, but I'll go back to you, Madam President.
Okay, and I'll, Mr. Meadows, did you have more comments or?
No, I was gonna let a few words if you'd like.
I see him. Is he unmuted? Is he ready to speak?
I am unmuted.
Okay, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Madam President, City Council, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Zorn, Mr. McCrina. I am humbled and honored by tonight for the consideration of appointment to serve the citizens of Southfield. This is a, this is something that I've seen and have waited for patiently. And I hope tonight to finally be a part of the city of Southfield and serving its citizens.
Thank you. Council, I will ask you if you have any questions or comments for Mr. Macias. And then we will take your vote. So first, we'll start with you, Councilwoman Morris. Do you have any questions or comments for our candidate?
No questions or comments for me. Congratulations, Deputy Fire Chief Macias, and welcome to the City of Southfield.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Banks?
I have no questions. I'd just like to, our call. Congratulations and welcome to the City of Southfield.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
I have no questions. I think our candidate is a very impressive candidate. I spoke to him and I heard from the other candidates. See, this is a good choice and I look forward to him serving the city of Southfield.
Councilman Cruz?
Same here. No questions. Very excited. I think we have another asset to the team and welcome to Southfield, sir.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
Thank you. No questions for me and I'll just echo everything that my colleagues have said. Congratulations and welcome to the City of Southfield.
And Councilman Mandelbaum?
No, I have no questions. I did enjoy the virtual meet and greet that we had and I look forward to working with you for the betterment of the city. Thank you very much. With that, Madam President, I'd like to make a motion, if you don't mind.
No, I don't mind at all.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the appointment of Deputy Fire Chief Antonio Macias.
Support Cruz.
Okay. It's been motioned by Councilman Mandelbaum and seconded by Councilman Cruz for us to accept the appointment of Anthony Macias as our new Deputy Fire Chief. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Appointment of a Deputy Fire Chief has been adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations and welcome to Southfield.
Thank you, ma'am, sir.
All right, your next item, Mr. Zorn?
Yes, Madam President, and thank you for your support on the appointment of our Deputy Fire Chief. The next item is a request to transfer a Class C liquor license for Three Sads LLC doing business as Starters Bar and Grill. I'd like to defer to the city clerk, who actually normally processes all of the liquor licenses.
To the Honorable Counsel, the Clerk's Office did receive the transfer request for a liquor license Class C for Starters Bar and Grill. If you recall, you all approved Starters Bar and Grill a few months back. They are a facility that's up on Evergreen. They have fulfilled the inspections and the Chief Baron has signed off on them. And they fulfilled everything that was needed for the City of Southfield application process. I do, this evening, we do have Madam President, Mr. Said on the line if you had any questions about the liquor license. But again, it's just a transfer to this facility for the liquor license. And I'll entertain any additional questions with the assistance of Ali if needed moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, I'll go around once again. If you have any questions regarding this item, here's your opportunity to ask or speak. We'll start with you, Councilwoman Banks.
Thank you. Is this restaurant presently operating?
Good evening, Madam President, members of council, Mr. Mayor, members of staff. This is Hassan Jawad, the owner of the building. Mr. Saad of Starters Bar and Grill is here with me currently. They actually opened up for business last week, as a matter of fact.
And then Hassan? Hassan, what kind of will be
Did you say what kind of food? I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Starters Bar, good afternoon, good evening, ladies and gentlemen of council, Mr. Mayor, Madam Clerk. Starters Bar and Grill serves steaks and seafood and traditional American cuisine.
Okay, that sounds wonderful.
Sounds wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
I have no question.
I have no question.
Thank you, Councilman Cruz.
Yeah, I don't have any questions. All I just want to say is that I just ate there yesterday, so.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
No questions for me. I'm really excited for this business to open and I look forward to trying out some of the food there too. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
Aside from being insulted that Councilman Cruz didn't invite me, I have no questions.
Councilwoman Morris?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so. Do we, council, are we gonna vote on this?
Councilwoman Banks, I move that we approve the request to transfer the Class C liquor license for Three Sads LLC, DBA Starters Bar and Grill.
Support.
Councilman Cruz. And Councilman Mandelbaum, I'll call you next time, so.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilman Brightwell, for us to approve the request to transfer Class C liquor license for Three Sads LLC doing business as Starters Bar and Grill. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Request to transfer Class C liquor license for Three Sads LLC doing business as Starters Bar and Grill has been adopted.
Thank you.
Madam President, the next item, we're requesting council to authorize the mayor and city clerk authority to execute a contract with A3C out of Ann Arbor, Michigan to provide preliminary architectural and engineering services and develop bid specifications for drawings and a total amount not to exceed $15,395 plus a 15% contingency of $23,109.25 for a total contract amount of $17,704.25. Funds are provided in the facility's maintenance contingency account. As we discussed at our last study session last Monday, the escalator in the police department going from the first to the second floor has not worked in quite a while and we're proposing to remove that escalator and enclose the staircase. And we're happy to answer any questions regarding this topic, this matter.
Okay, council, I'll open up for questions from you and I'll start with you, Councilman Brightwell.
No questions.
Thank you. Councilman Cruz? Okay, we'll come back. Councilman Hoskins?
Questions, I'm sorry. I just, I messed up something on here. No questions though.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskin?
No questions for me. Thank you.
Councilman Mandelbaum?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Morris?
No questions, thank you.
And Councilwoman Banks?
No questions, thank you.
Okay. Council, we need to entertain a motion?
Councilwoman Banks, I move that we approve the contract with A3C of Ann Arbor, Michigan for consulting services for removal of escalators in the public safety building.
Support.
I move, by Councilman Brightwell, for us to approve the consulting services for the removal of escalators in our public safety building. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Consulting services for removal of escalators in public safety building.
Thank you, Madam President and Honorable Counsel. Item D, we are requesting an authorization for payment for repairs for metal sculpture. The action we are asking for is that city council does hereby authorize payment of invoices totaling $12,000.
I'm sorry, Mr. Zorn, we didn't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, thank you for your prior authorizations. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Item D, we're requesting authorization for payment for repair of metal sculptures. The actual action we are requesting this evening is that council hereby authorize payment for invoices totaling $12,321 and up to $1,000 for additional restoration work to Dunn's Welding of Southfield, Michigan. Funds are available in the mayor's budget account. The account number is indicated. The background on this, in May of 2000, on May 4, 2020, council accepted the recommendation of the Arts Commission on the proposed placement of eight pieces of art. The sculpture in particular that we're discussing is titled "The City of Southfield." This was an anniversary sculpture piece that was previously located up on the hill to the east of our courthouse. There was a waterline break last fall and the piece had to be dismantled. Upon dismantling it, we discovered that the piece needed Upon dismantling it, we discovered that the piece needed extensive restoration. The increased damage to the piece made its restoration a priority over its original scheduled time. The piece was sent out to Dunn's Welding here in Southfield and restored. As the restoration work happened, it was originally anticipated that the amount would only be $9,500. However, the extensive nature of the work sandblasting and that, the actual amount of the work is now $12,321, which exceeds the city administrator's authority of $10,000. So at this point, we're requesting that council authorize expenditures up to $13,321 so that we can complete a payment to Dunn's Welding for the restoration of the city of Southfield art piece, which has been installed on the front lawn here at City Hall.
Okay, thank you. I'll open it up to council if you have any questions or comments. And I'll start with you, Councilman Cruz.
Comments?
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
No questions for me on this. Thank you.
Councilman Mandelbaum?
No questions, thank you.
Councilwoman Morris?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
No questions, but I would just like to comment that I'm very pleased to see that we are using a Southfield resident who has been in this community for many, many, many years. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
Well, I have a question. This is my favorite piece of art in the camps of the City of Southfield. I asked Mr. Fakasi years ago why it was up on the hill in the backyard. But my question is the authorization for payment. I do, I never, I don't, you know, just on a budgetary standpoint, do we, we have that much money, miscellaneous money in the mayor's budget? Now, I realize that it's a big city, we do budgets, and I try to to question certain things as we go along during the budgetary process. But it was my understanding that the Art Commission was a self-sustaining entity. They received money from, was it a certain percentage when there's certain development in the City of Southfield? And I called on this earlier today, but is this, these funds I think are coming out of the general fund? And I'm not comfortable with this. It obviously if it was approved, and I do understand as the big organization, certain budget items get approved and they carry on. You don't know about them until they pop up. So this, obviously, if, and I did talk to our fiscal department today. So evidently, certain things were approved, but I'm uncomfortable with our funds paying for art, this repair. And this is my favorite piece of art. I'm an art lover. I clearly love it. But I'm not comfortable with art purchasing or payment or repairs coming out of our general fund, so. And we will clarify this as we go along, but this is obviously something that is in the pipeline. But this will clearly be cleared up in the future. I'm uncomfortable with this money coming out of the general fund. And I'm surprised that the mayor's office would have this much discretionary miscellaneous money in his budget. So these things will be looked at.
Council President, I'd like to respond.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
First of all, this piece was property of the City of Southfield. It's a Southfield asset. It was not part of the Northland Collection, which the Art Commission and the Friends of Southfield Public Arts have raised money for. Knowing, normally I don't have that kind of money in my budget, but knowing that this repair was going to be needed, the piece was damaged as well as badly rusted. And it had been painted before, and another coat of paint could not be put on it, so it had to be sandblasted. I got an estimate for $9,500, as Administrator Zorn said. So I, when the budget process was formed last spring, I asked that money be set aside to restore this piece. And that's why the money is coming out of the mayor's budget. Mr. Brightwell, this is highly unusual. Normally, I wouldn't have a line item like that in my budget, but I knew that this piece needed to be repaired. It is city property. It's been city property since 1983. And unfortunately, when it had to be moved, it was damaged. It was again moved because there was a water main break underneath the, underneath the piece. So I appreciate the council's support in seeing that this piece was moved to a more prominent location. It does have its historic nature. Matter of fact, Melvin Leserwitz, the creator of the sculptor, died a couple of years ago in his 90s. And you can Google him and see a number of his works online. He's a sculptor of some note, so we're very glad that the city has this in its possession. Normally, the repairs of the Northland artwork, that's what money's been raised for. But again, this was city property. It's like repairing anything else around the City of Southfield, such as the escalator that council just approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Zorn, did you have any other comments or any?
No, other than this budget item was discussed at the May 4 meeting, how the funds would come together for each of these various pieces. And so I am requesting council to authorize this so we can complete this. And I was remiss, the additional $1,000 is also to make a repair to the lady in waiting, which there was some, the piece, as I understand, there's an arm damaged on it, and that's where the additional $1,000 comes from.
Let me, Madam Chair, let me ask one question. Is there a list? It's my understanding that there's $75,000 set aside. Is that true? I want to see a list of what these dollars, because this is really, although these things were, all this, no, this is a big company, a big organization. Certainly, we don't, we don't spend enough time going item by item, which I know every budget organization goes through, but item by item. But at our level, we don't, the council, we don't spend enough time going by item by item. And we assume that these things would be handled at the level that might bring up some questions. So I would like to see what else falls in this, in this particular category. I mean, because obviously, and I spoke to our fiscal, we're gonna be making some changes with respect to making sure we drill, as a subcommittee, we can drill down into these various items, it is appropriate. Because this is, when I saw this today, it was kind of, when I finally got around to digesting it, it just made my eyes pop open. So I'm for it. It is something that was previously approved, but it clearly needed additional scrutiny.
And you were asking for a list of city-owned assets as far as artwork? Is that what you're asking for, or I wasn't clear?
My, I'm asking for, it's my understanding, there's a list of potential, I'm asking for a potential list of how the funds might be expended in the future. I think there's $75,000 being allocated, and I want to see how that, and how that dollar would, how those amounts were drawn on.
Okay. So could we have that added under our follow-up items, Madam Clerk? And would that be you, Fred Zorn, that would provide that list for our council?
Madam Chair, right now I've pulled up the council item from May 4. There's a list on it. I need to find the budget piece. We'll get that out, council.
Okay, thank you. All right. Thank you. Counsel, are we ready to vote?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Councilwoman Banks, I move that we authorize the payment for the repairs of the metal sculpture.
Support. I support that.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilwoman Banks, seconded by Councilman Brightwell for the authorization for payment for the repairs of this metal sculpture. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
And Banks?
Yes.
Authorization for payment for repairs of the metal sculpture.
Madam President, if I could speak to the item of May 29, the resolution adopted is identical to what was passed. I've shared that with council leadership, as well as Mr. Brightwell and the clerk. But the minutes are identical to the action. Yes, it required a use of fund balance. And now I'm trying to pull out what I just said. It's, uh, minutes here. It's the, uh...
It's the September 29th minute.
Yes, where we approved, I'm looking for the $26,000 amount, I apologize. Here it is. I've got multiple screens opened up. The item requested is identical to what's in the minutes, and where it totals $26,909. And the funds are coming from a transfer from fund balance.
Okay, well, I accept that. Here's the question that popped up. I'm, you know, fund balance means a lot in our, in our financial structure. And obviously, I looked at it then, but this popped up at this particular point in time. So that drove the question. I wanted clarification that we went along with that. So I don't, I don't have a problem with it being correct. As long as it is correct, it was my clarification that it was correct.
Okay, would it, would it be proper for us to now ask for a motion for the approval of the September 29th minutes?
Yes.
I'll make a motion, Madam Chair, that we approve the September 29, 2020 minutes as presented.
Councilwoman Banks, support?
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Banks, for the approval of the September 29th meeting as presented. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Thank you. Anything else from you, City Administrator?
Yes, Madam President. I've asked Larry Searls to speak. We've had a number of calls. DTE has started tree trimming in the City of Southfield, and I'm hoping Mr. Searls is on. Late this afternoon, I had Nicole Dixon send out a seven-page document pertaining to DTE's tree trimming services. DTE is working with our forestry division and communicating what's happening. But I thought it important that the council members know this has started. Originally, we did not think it was gonna start till early in 2021, but they have started working just off, I believe, Eight Mile and Sherman. Is Mr. Searls here, if I may, Madam President?
Yes.
I am here, Fred.
All right. Do you want to just walk council through this? And to council, page seven in that document is a map of the areas that DTE is, will be working in.
Good evening, Madam President and Council. Just briefly, I want to make you guys aware that DTE has started their tree trimming along the power lines in Southfield. Their crews just finished up at Eight Mile and Sherman. They're currently over in the Catalpa area. On page seven in the packet, as Fred said, there's a map that's gonna show all the areas that DTE is trimming in Southfield this year. The big highlight points of this is what brush they cut down, they'll pull out and remove. The larger stuff would be cut into firewood size and left, and it'd be on the resident to remove that or use that or put the site free firewood out in front. They're gonna be running through for the next couple of months. They do check in with Leo Clower of our forestry division to let him know where they're at, and he makes sure they're following our tree ordinance as well on live trees. Other important part is the residential notices that are going out. We gave the guy samples of each notice, and actually, they just finished at my house along our easement, and they do knock on the door and talk to you when they need to access the property. The program's gonna be going on for a couple of months, and it's done by contractors, but they do have a lot of identification on that shows that they're actual DTE contractors. If you have any questions, I'll answer when I can.
Okay, I'll go to council. Counsel, do you have any questions for Mr. Searls? Let's start with you, Mr. Hoskins.
Sorry about that. No questions for me on this.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
No questions, and I just want to agree with Mr. Searls. They recently, DTE recently had a tree trimming crew in my neighborhood due to some issues that the fire chief had, and all of their trucks were labeled, raised that they were very polite to the neighbors. They were working in the backyards probably for a couple of days. But they do ask permission before they come in. They're labeled. So they do try to work with the residents and for the safety of them as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilwoman Morris?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Cruz?
No questions, thank you.
Councilman Brightwell?
No questions.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you for providing the detailed map. I have no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel, and have a good holiday.
Thank you. Same to you.
Madam President, we just wanted to inform council, you have examples of the communications DTE is using. And we know that tree trimming can frequently be a topic that residents are concerned about. This time, I'd like to just wish everyone happy holidays. It is a season of light. The past year has certainly tested our resilience as well as our emotional intelligence. And we've managed to accomplish a lot. I want to thank council for their support of the administration, management, and our employees this past year. And as it has been said earlier, there is a light at the end of this tunnel. And if we, you know, we need to continue to mask up and follow the safety protocols. But, you know, on just behalf of all of the employees here, I want to wish council and the entire community happy holidays. Enjoy the time with your family and loved ones. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Attorney?
Yes, good evening, Madam President, Council, Mayor. I have nothing to add at this time, and I just want to wish everyone a safe and healthy holiday season.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
The same. I just want to wish everyone a safe and prosperous holiday season. And I just, as we deal with the... I just, as we deal with the challenges of 2020, just encourage everyone to remain grateful. And I just want to thank everyone. We've had thirty-five teleconference meetings, and I'm grateful that everyone has just adapted to what we were handed. And a big shout-out to everybody's Wi-Fi, because they've been getting plenty of usage with all of these Zoom meetings and meetings that we have. Take care of them.
Thank you. Our Treasurer, are you on the line?
Yeah. Give us one second. I think he caught in, so I'm trying to unmute him. Give me one second.
Okay.
Yeah, he should be unmuted. Are you there?
I'm here. Yes, thank you for unmuting. Okay, so I just wanted to expand on what the mayor had said earlier, and his comments. He had mentioned about the Southfield menorah parade and lighting this evening, December six, PM, at the Young Israel Southfield at Loser and Winchester, right next door to Stevenson School. At five-thirty, they'll be leaving from there, going through the neighborhood, and I mean, door lighting at six-fifteen, I believe, will take place. It should be on the side closer to the library is the parking lot that they're going to be using, and everyone will stay in their cars. And there'll hopefully be refreshments available as the cars pass by. It should be a nice event, considering the situation and trying to keep everyone safe. But as was mentioned, the light at the end of the tunnel, this is hopefully, as we get to the light at the end of the tunnel, this will give us some light through the tunnel. So that's, that's the Festival of Lights, and that's what we try to, you know, see the goodness and brighten, and brighten up everyone's lives as much as possible. And also, another item I wanted to mention for the benefit of our business community and people that are, unfortunately, this pandemic has caused a lot of economic hardship on many business owners. There is a Michigan Economic Development Corporation grant that's going to be coming out tomorrow morning at nine AM, on the fifteenth of December, nine AM. You need to go to the website to be able, you can't go until nine AMs when, and it's first come, first served. But there's going to be ten million dollars worth of grant money available to provide relief primarily for restaurants and, and different businesses that were, had, had closed during the hardship of the COVID-19 situation. The website, I believe, is michiganbusiness.org, michiganbusiness.org. And you can look for the COVID-19 relief over there. It's the Michigan Economic Development Corporation that's providing that, and they're dividing it out throughout the entire state of Michigan. So hopefully, people will be able to take a benefit from this and help them make it through this, make it through this challenging times. And I also want to echo happy holidays to everybody and a happy and healthy new year, and look forward to seeing everyone in person soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Planner Code? Okay. Do we have our city assessor or our city engineer? None? Do we can go into closed session?
Madam Chair, this is Councilman Mandelbaum. I'd like to make a motion that we go into closed session.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilman Brightwell, for the approval of us to go into a closed session. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks? Banks?
Yes, thank you.
Brightwell?
Yes.
And Hoskins?
Yes.
Motion to go into closed session, approved?
Okay. We will go into closed session. I believe the, the information was sent out by our clerk office a little bit earlier, so we'll just pause here, and then we'll call into the line for closed session.